I'm happy to welcome all of my fellow board members and call the October 6, 2020 school board meeting to order. We continue to modify meeting processes in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Public attendance is permitted on a limited basis, allowing for 30 persons in addition to staff and board members to be present. All public comments will be in person this evening. Pam, roll call please.
Ms. Belford?
Present.
Ms. McDougal?
Present.
Ms. Siskel?
Present.
Ms. Campbell?
Present.
And Ms. Duskovich?
Present.
The board will now hold a moment of silent reflection and invite the viewing audience Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I would like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of our community.
Can you hear your name?
Ms. Duskovich?
I just have one general huge shout out. It's, for those that don't know, it is National Principal Appreciation Month. And so usually towards the end of the year, we have Teacher Appreciation Week, and we celebrate our teachers, but this is a good time. Just take a day this month if you can at your child's school, or if you're an employee, maybe reach out to your principal and your administration and just give them a shout out if nothing else. They are, the things they are doing right now to get, to get our schools through this time, but honestly, the last couple of years with security risks increasing and then being so responsible not just for education, but for literally the lives of our, of their, of the students and their staff. They've got a lot weighing on them for, it's just remarkable. If you really look around, you know, some of these principals have 2,000-plus students that they're responsible for their education, keeping them safe, keeping them well, and now COVID on top of it. It's just, it's a huge responsibility, and we owe them a sincere gratitude. So just wanted to take the time to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. Ms. Campbell, you want to go next?
All right. So last week, I became officially certified as a youth mental health first-aider. And so I'm, this is not for, to pat me on the back, I'm about to thank our Student Services Department because we now are making this program that our teachers are trained in because they are very off, are getting trained in because they're very often the first line of care for our students and their mental health. We're now making that available to parents in the community. So thank you, Chris Moore and your team. Please pass that on because we've sent that out. There are a couple other dates, so just advertisement, you can go on the website and find some other dates. There, I think there's a Saturday, and then there's one that's broken up between two evenings. The training was fantastic, and I wanted to give a shout out to Anna Curry, who did part of the training. She is a social worker at South ALC. And also to Teresa Kavanaugh, who is one of our coordinators for Brevard Aftercare. They did a fantastic job training us, and it was really exciting to see not only some parents, a handful of parents, but also kudos to our public library staff because they sent a couple of the youth service coordinators from our libraries to also do the training. It was all virtual, so that, because they have direct contact with youth in our area. So I was really excited to see that, and I just want to encourage other community members and parents who have, you know, influence over our, our young people to take advantage of that opportunity because it was really good.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Ms. McDougal?
I only have one, and I want to remind people that BAC Arts, which is the Brevard Alliance, oh my goodness, my mind, I'm losing my mind.
Achievement?
Yeah, no, it's Brevard Art, I missed that council. But the BAC, along with Moltlier Injury Law Firm, is putting on the holiday, annual holiday card contest, which invites all of our Brevard County Elementary exceptional students to design a cover for their holiday cards. So I just want to give a shout out for them doing it. Don't forget the deadline is November 6th, and I hope most of our students participate in this. No, it's, no, it's, it's.
Brevard Cultural Alliance.
Thank you so much. It's Brevard Cultural Alliance. Oh my goodness.
Thank you, Ms. McDougal. You're so welcome. Mr. Susan?
Thank you, Ms. Belford. First off, I wanted to say, thank you to Ms. Campbell. My daughter was born, my fifth child, and my daughter was born last week, and Ms. Campbell went out and got me these fine balloons. I'm trying to bring them in the picture here. Our, our daughter, Colette, was born seven pounds, four ounces, and we're really excited to the new addition to the family. And I wanted to tell everybody how nice it was that Ms. Campbell got me these along with you guys, and how I may not be the best reciprocating individual when it comes to gifts out of everybody, the guy in the room, right? So when you guys are all, hey, make sure you get money from Matt because we know he won't do anything kind of thing, I really appreciate you guys, and I appreciate you going out for the balloons, and I appreciate, you know, you guys keeping me in check and making sure everybody gets taken care of. Otherwise, my daughters and everybody will tell you, that's just the way it would happen. So thank you, Ms. Campbell, and thank you to everybody that gave me the thanks for, for the baby. The other thing is, I was really excited to hear that you were talking about getting certified, because one of the things I was talking about when I was on the phone with the, you know, the Capital Outlay Team that I have, right? That's my team, so we're championing. I brought up the fact that prior, about two years ago, Dr. Mullins said it was okay if I went out and got trained to be a bus driver, right? So there was an opportunity to do that. Now, it doesn't mean for everybody out there, and Dr. Mullins has probably fallen over in his seat right now, that I plan on driving any of our children during BPS hours, right? But the opportunity presents itself, that if I'm able to get licensed, that means that if I wanted to take the children from my Boys and Girls Clubs or my dock neighborhoods or something like that, we might be able to take them out to the Space Center. So I, I was really excited, and I heard about your, your thing that was going on, and I was just like, oh yeah, that's right. So I'll be applying next summer to come in and get driver's license, so. You okay with that, Dr. Mullins?
Absolutely. Just be prepared. We'll, we'll also solicit you to be a bus driver sub.
Anyways, that'd be great. And I also wanted to say thank you to Dr. Mullins and Dr. Theddy for clearing up some of the confusion that was going on with the coaching supplements earlier. They did a phenomenal job. There were some people that read something a little bit odd, and what they did was they took it in. They said, hey, you know, they got it wrapped around, got the right information out, and they did a great job. So I wanted to say thank you to that. And with that, I'm good. I reserve the rest of my, in case I want to bring anybody for an award later or something like that.
We can talk about that later, Mr. Susan. Dr. Mullins?
Thank you, Ms. Belford. I would like to take a couple minutes. I want to recognize some folks. First, Ms. Campbell is very aware, central middle schools in the Meadowlands, this is exciting news. We have long awaited to fix the chiller plant situation on Wingate Corridor. Those schools were on a shared chiller plant system. The sales surtax, the current initiative funded the repair of that, and Sue and her team, I know she would give all the credit to the, the men and women out in the field that have made that possible, from specking it out, the specifications, to keeping the school informed, to having temporary support for the chillers. But we are in progress, and I think by December, we're going to be 100% onto the new system. So just wanted to give that shout out because we've been, we've all experienced some, some difficulties with that system. I also want to give a shout out to our procurement and distribution services department because they've been awarded the prestigious 25th Annual Achievement of Excellence in Procurement for 2020 from the National Procurement Institute. The AEP Award is earned by public and nonprofit agencies that demonstrate a commitment to procurement excellence. This annual program recognizes procurement organizations that embrace innovation, professionalism, productivity, leadership, and e-procurement. The AEP program encourages the development of the excellence as well as continued organizational improvement to earn the award. So for 2020, there were 188 successful applicants, including 40 different counties, 69 cities, 15 higher education agencies, 22 school districts, 34 special districts, five state agencies, and three others. Brevard Public Schools is a first-time winner for 2020 and one of only three Florida school districts to receive this award. The other two districts were Orange and Palm Beach. We don't find that surprising right now because our team across the back has hailed our procurement and distribution team, particularly helping us get through this supply chain challenging time of COVID. They have negotiated, renegotiated, they have followed through with contracts and procuring supplies, putting us in a position to be at the front of the line. So can't give a loud enough and formal enough shout out to our procurement team. Mr. Novelli, please let the team know that we acknowledge them tonight and commend them for their ongoing commitment to excellence to support our entire organization. And last, I want to take a moment and recognize, we are in Employee of the Year and Teacher of the Year nomination season, and I think it's noteworthy that this year, we have three Sheriff Office SROs who were selected among their school's employees for Employee of the Year. Corporal Kent Gudibo from Freedom 7 Elementary, Corporal Jackie Saxenmeyer from Edgewood Junior Senior High School, and Corporal Victoria Sumlin from Fairglenn Elementary. We value our law enforcement officers, our school resource officers in our schools and the part of team that they bring to our school environment. They're not guests on our campus, they're not a separate agency, part of our schools, they are part of our team. And if, the board will indulge me for another moment. Lieutenant Neal wrote some very kind words about BPS and the environment we've created with, with the team, and I would appreciate if I could read that on behalf of Lieutenant Neal. "It can be difficult for law enforcement officers at times to go from the known into the unknown when they enter the school resource officer role. When they enter into a school with a strong and caring administration, it's evident. As the program has grown and adjustments made, it's very rewarding to watch examples of these dedicated public servants working alongside with your administrations as a team. The three corporals receiving this award are great examples, but also says volumes about your administrators as well. Leadership promotes greatness and is not without work. You have incredible educators that are deserving of this award, and they chose their SRO. That's a team we are lucky to have and many other examples of this. I've seen a lot of changes over the past two years, and this is good stuff." So congratulations to our deputies, and Lieutenant Neal and Major Lanza, thank you for your support and to set them up for success. Most of all, we appreciate being part of a team, and I think it's a nice companion to Ms. Duskovich's, compliments to our administrators, our principals, who helped create that team environment across our schools to make our schools better, make our schools safe, and make our schools a place of success for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. So I started making my list for recognition, and I had to kind of rethink my approach because I don't want to be the one who keeps us up here for 30 minutes. So at our last board meeting, one of the things that I recognized was Pilot Club, who had reached out to one of our schools and brought thank yous for all of the staff there. This week, I want to say a huge thank you to Sunny's Barbecue, who gave free meals to all of our teachers this week, if they, they went into Sunny's to pick up. But in addition to that, I have, I started making a list of our team members that have, have handled just some, some challenging situations over the past couple of weeks for me or through me, working with me. And I suddenly realized that really what I need to do is I just need to recognize if, if you all who are in the audience, would just turn around and look at the folks that are sitting at the tables around the room. I literally could spend 30 minutes telling you each and every one of these people I have gone to in the past week with requesting assistance to, to meet the needs or concerns of our constituents. And I think it is incredibly important for us all to realize that all of these people that are sitting at these tables had full-time jobs prior to COVID, full-time and non-some. And the challenges that have come to our district with the pandemic and keeping things safe and responding, quite frankly, to a tense environment where many people seem to not be the most compassionate and grace-giving right now. But these folks who are sitting around the room have, have taken on still those tasks that they have been doing for all of this time, on top of all of the COVID response. And I would suggest, and you all can tell me if I'm wrong, but I doubt that you will, that we are dealing with a more volatile community in, in many ways, and less patience, less willingness to be flexible. I think everyone simply is on edge, and certainly we feel that when they reach out to us as a district as well. But these folks sitting around the room, 24/7, seven, and literally seven days a week, Dr. Mullins and I were meeting on Saturday and got a call from Chris Moore, who had been working all Saturday morning. So it's just been constant for them, and I can't thank you guys enough for still being Johnny-on-the-spot with responses and addressing issues and reaching out to families who are, are concerned or upset and addressing, Major Lanza walked one of my schools with me because I had some security concerns, and Sue Hand's department addressed some, some mowing issues that had been a concern for a school and some other facilities issues that we hadn't been able to get resolved for a while. And Robin Novelli, I think I've been an enormous pain to him as I've had concerns with, with bus depots and security and all sorts of things. And, you know, Jane, Jane and Stephanie, who handle all of our leading and learning, who have been addressing concerns from teachers and concerns from parents at schools. Russell, who keeps us going in technology and has rescued me more times than I can say. Dr. Theddy, who never, ever stops and is just an absolute champion for everything that she does. Chris Moore and Dr. Theddy, I think have gotten to know each other even better this year in the way that they've been working together with COVID response. And of course, we can't forget Cindy Losinski, who came in at quite a trying time to handle finance for the district. And I don't know if everyone has met him, but Russ Brune, who is our new government and community relations person. And then up here at the front, we have Paul Gibbs, who has had no shortage of legal issues to walk us through as we develop new challenges. So thank you to all of you for all the work that you do. We appreciate you. Okay, that is going to bring us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Belford and members of the board, on tonight's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one recognition, one presentation, seven consent items, two action items, and three information items. Additionally, we will have one staff report. The changes made to the agenda since being released to the public on September 15 are as follows. There were revisions to Item A7 on administrative staff recommendations. Attachments was made to the presentation called Superintendent's Report, and to Item F14 on instructional staff recommendations. Information Item H20 on administrative staff recommendations is in addition. That's it.
Thank you, sir. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Ms. Campbell, seconded by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion?
Has it come up for you?
It just came up for me.
All right. I don't have anything up. I got nothing.
About nothing?
Nothing.
Pam's coming to the rescue, I think.
There's like, no voting here.
Do you mind if I get?
No, I don't mind. No.
Before. Did you log back out and back in for this session?
Yeah, I did.
I see nothing.
I know.
I know.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, would you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
Yes, there are three persons under this category for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Duskovich. Is there any discussion? I will call for a voice. Are you in?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Please vote. Oh, mine just advanced. It was stuck on the previous one. I think it was waiting on Cheryl, maybe?
Are we still waiting for me?
No.
Okay.
I'm almost there.
Cheryl, there's a hand crank on the side.
Does it pop up for everybody?
I got it. I'm on it.
Hang on. Jeez Louise.
And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about the recognition item?
Ms. Belfort and members of the board, tonight I am so pleased and so proud to share with all of you that we will be recognizing five more Brevard schools which have achieved the Florida Arts Model School designation. Here to facilitate the recognition is Molly Vega, Secondary Leading and Learning Director. Ms. Vega?
Thank you. Tonight, we are honoring exemplary dance, music, theater, and visual arts programs in our district who have received the Florida Arts Model School designation for 2020 through 2023. We are very proud to announce, since the inception of this award six years ago, 23 of the 55 schools designated statewide are Brevard schools. And to date, Brevard County has received more FAMs recognitions than any other county in Florida. Assisting with the-
Ms. Vega, could you repeat that again?
Yes. 23 of the 55 schools designated statewide are Brevard Public Schools.
It's worth doing again, just because we have the most in the entire state. We got to celebrate.
I think she missed the part where it says greatest ever, intergalactic award. Keep going down there.
That's good, too.
Yeah.
Sorry, Ms. Vega. Thank you.
No worries. All right, assisting with the presentation of awards is Minnie Orr, our K-12 music content specialist, and Leland Terrio, Executive Director of the Florida Alliance of Arts Education.
Thank you, Ms. Vega. Dr. Mullins, Ms. Belfort, members of the school board, award recipients, and audience members. It is a great honor to stand before you tonight to recognize our Florida Arts Model Schools. The Florida Department of Education supports a complete and comprehensive education which includes dance, music, theater, and visual arts for all Florida students. To help achieve this goal, the Florida Department of Education, in partnership with the Florida Alliance for Arts Education, seeks to identify strong arts education programs in schools throughout Florida. Ms. Terrio, is already forward, to acknowledge the honorees who were viewing this presentation. Receiving the FAMs designation for music, South Lake Elementary, Principal Jennifer Brockwell and Music Teacher Mary Johnson. Quest Elementary, Principal Christine Boyd, former music teacher and current art teacher Kimberly Haggard and Music Teacher Lori Foot. Central Middle School, Principal Todd Shearer, Band Director Dan Lee, Guitar and Keyboard Teacher Yvette LePret, Orchestra Director Robin Morris, and Choral Director Robert Washington. Kennedy Middle School, Principal Sherry Tomlinson, Choral and Orchestra Director Jacqueline Brooks, and Band Director Michael Spur. Receiving the FAMs designation for Visual Art, O'Gally High School, Principal Jeremy Salmon, Visual Art Teacher Anna Marie Zink, and Visual Art Teacher Shannon Krailing. Congratulations again to all our award recipients, and we look forward to delivering these awards to your respective schools. And now I would like to welcome Leland Terrio to the podium for a few final remarks.
Thank you, Minnie. And thank you, Dr. Mullins, and the members of the school board here tonight. I am Leland Terrio, the Executive Director for the Florida Alliance for Arts Education. We are tasked with making all the applications, reviewing all the applications, and then making suggestions to the Department of Ed. They approve them, and then these awards. It is outstanding that Brevard County Schools has had so many of these awards. This year alone, we had 10 recipients, and five of them are in Brevard County Schools. I do want to recognize the tremendous amount of work that goes into making these applications. Each of the schools elects to start their application in October. It takes them until January to complete these applications. The work is so arduous that this year, with the present situation, we're not even accepting applications because no one school could possibly measure the high level of standard that they would need in order to get the designation, not under these circumstances. So we have elected to hold off for one year and reinstate them the year after. So I'm really excited to be here because usually we would give these awards at our annual summit in the summer, and we get to do it in front of our colleagues and peers. But because of COVID, one of my roses is that I get to go around to the school systems, actually meet you people face-to-face, and deliver these awards by hand, and I'm so excited to do that. This year, however, I did have one, we've been calling them thorns. And one of my very small thorns is that one of the people that I hold dear to my heart, who is probably one of the major instigators and reasons why you have so many of these schools being designated as Florida Arts Model Schools, Cynthia Johnson has retired this year and just breaks my heart because I know how much work she's done. I know what a vibrant advocate she is for the arts in everything she does, every word she says. She has been honored time and time again over the 40 years she has dedicated her life to educating people. And I just, I have, I'm absolutely speechless at her work. And you guys were so lucky and so fortunate to have had her here all these many years. So Cindy, if you don't mind me embarrassing you just a little tiny bit, if you would please come up. On behalf of the Florida Alliance for Arts Education, me and all those board member guys, I would like to present you with this little teeny-tiny token of our appreciation. Congratulations, Brevard County. You are a model to the other 67 school districts in the state of Florida.
Did you say you were going to give the county?
This is-
There it is. Yeah.
Yeah. So this one is for Kennedy. But my understanding is this award will also be at the other four schools that were designated this year, as well as, see those really ugly boxes on the floor? Those hold the banners. They will have a big six-by-three-foot banner and gold medallions with their school name and their designations engraved on them. So congratulations.
Thank you so much for taking the time to come and share that great news with us. We appreciate it immensely.
Absolutely.
Dr. Mullins, you looked like you wanted to speak.
I have, too. We didn't have the privilege to acknowledge Cindy Johnson's retirement earlier in the summer. Well, we did, but Ms. Johnson wasn't here to receive it in person, and I can't allow this moment, an opportunity to pass without saying a few personal words. Cindy, I remember our first introduction on the campus of Clear Lake Middle School as a young, very green-behind-the-ears principal. And you came alongside me and said, "What can we do together to make your music program even better at Clear Lake?" And those weren't just words. They were followed with action and support. You made me a better principal. You made me a better leader, and I carry that into today. On behalf of the father of three children, who each are great benefactors of the quality music programs that you helped establish, lead, and be a part of, their lives are better today as a result of the leadership you brought to our music programs. And on behalf of the children across our great district, who are all benefiting from the legacy you leave behind now in your retirement, I thank you on behalf of our 70,000 children and my own personal three kids for your commitment to them. Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you. All right, I believe, Dr. Mullins, that you have some presentations for us this evening. Can you tell us about them?
Ms. Belfort and members of the board, I will be sharing information related to some more celebrations, I anticipate. I hope you'll agree with me, related to our advanced diploma designations, as well as a budget update for the board and the community. There we go. All right, so I'd like to start by sharing with the board and the community. In a year when student achievement data has not particularly been available for us to reflect on and certainly celebrate as we historically can in Brevard County, we do have some impressive student graduation accomplishments and outcomes to celebrate this evening. I'm going to be, I will be going through several different diploma designations, and in each slide, you'll see the designation on the top left of the screen and the growth that we have seen from last year, from 2019 to 2020. First is our Scholars Diploma Students, Graduates. Keep in mind that Brevard County has a more rigorous graduation requirement than the state of Florida requires, where we actually have a 26 credit requirement compared to the state's 24. But in addition to that, for students to earn the Scholar High School Diploma, there are other requirements on top of our basic graduation requirements that includes at least one credit in an advanced course like AP, IB, ACE, or dual enrollment. And you can see that the number of scholar diplomas awarded increased by 250, almost 250 students from 2019 to 2020. Our Merit Scholars Diplomas are the result of students who pass one or more industry certifications from the DOE's approved list in order to earn the Merit Diploma Designation. I want to share with our board, I know you know, but I want to share with our community because I still hear often that our CTE programs, our Career and Technical Education programs, are sometimes the best-kept secret in Brevard. But we offer 82 different industry certifications across our high schools. Essentially, every one of our high schools is a Career and Technical Education Center for our students. And you can see that we again increased the number of Merit Diploma recipients from 2019 to 2020. And I checked with Dr. Sullivan just earlier this evening. What do we know yet what the percentage of our graduates is who walked across the stage and got their diploma, but also earned an industry certification credential? And once again, for at least the third year in a row, we have more than 40% of our high school graduates earning at least one industry certification, and in many cases, they earned several. You'll see on this slide, the school has highlighted, these pictures are our kids in their CTE programs. Top left is O'Gally High School and the Aviation Program. The bottom left is Heritage High School with the Water Treatment CTE Program. Top right is Satellite High School with the Automotive Program. And bottom right is Titusville High's Nursing Program for Students. I want to highlight two of our high schools for their accomplishment in this area of Career and Technical Education. Astronaut High School had the highest percentage increase this year in the percent of high school students receiving, over 20 percentage point increase from 19 to 20 in CTE certifications. And then, another North Brevard winner, Titusville High School had the highest percent of graduates who earned an industry credential, with 68% of their graduating seniors earning an industry credential.
Hold on.
I see Mr. Susan getting ready to-
Could you say that again, though? Could you just repeat that?
Fixed.
Yeah, we have dual winners in North Brevard.
North Brevard.
Astronaut and Titusville High School.
Come on!
But I will say, Mr. Susan, every single high school in Brevard County improved the percent of seniors who graduated with an industry credential. So all of our high schools across the county improved. Some of the other programs and industry certifications that sometimes go unnoticed are 911 Public Safety Telecommunications Certification. I believe that one's at Rock, Title. Another Titusville. And, you know-
I'll give you the notes.
Dr. Sullivan. We often hear, "What are we doing to prepare kids to go into the trades?" We have full construction programs with certifications in heat pump, air conditioning, electrical, and so on. So our air conditioning, we have a air conditioning certification program at Space Coast Junior Senior High. All right, I better move on.
All right, you need to mention other districts. Come on now.
Get them, McDougal, get them.
We did just update the manufacturing program at Cocoa High School, Ms. McDougal. Well, and O'Gally does have the state's only aviation program.
Nation, nation-only hangar.
That is true. Airplane hangar in one of our high schools.
We got something.
There's a lot to brag about. In the gold seal of biliteracy, we had over 37 students earn, increase in the number of students qualifying for that designation, where they attain a high level of competency in listening, speaking, reading, and writing in one or more world languages, including English. They have to achieve a score of four or five on a world language assessment at the least. Our Cambridge ACE programs, we have over, we have 118 more students who earned their ACE diploma from 2019 to 2020, where students have to earn seven ACE course credits in specified areas that includes passing external ACE exams.
Wait, Dr. Mullins, if you could go back a slide, I think you didn't recognize the school that was inside that picture as you did in all the other pictures that were inside this slide thing?
You are correct, Mr. Susan. I apologize. That is our O'Gally High School ACE, some of our ACE diploma recipients, along with Rockledge High School is an ACE diploma program school, so.
They're not in the picture, right? But Rockledge is my school, too, so that's good.
And then we have our International Baccalaureate Program, which also over-doubled the number of students earning an IB diploma. And in the IB program, students have to earn six IB course credits in addition to all their other graduation requirements. That also includes an external essay, a major project that involves community service, all externally assessed.
And what schools are those?
What did I start? We have Melbourne High School. We have Cocoa Beach Junior Senior High School. And that's it. Very excited to share with you that our AP capstone diploma recipients increased again. This is growing in interest and popularity, so much so that the legislature just approved acknowledgement of the AP capstone diploma designation for additional bonus FTE, benefit to our teachers and the district. And again, an increase of 15 students, where they have to earn a passing score on six AP exams by the time they graduate. So this is one of my favorite slides, although I love the pictures of our kids representing their programs. Here is a graphic showing the increase in every single one of our advanced designation areas across the district. But what's most impressive is that in a year of some of the greatest uncertainty that our schools faced, our amazing teachers, our dedicated professionals, our school counselors, our administrators, worked together to make sure that even though our kids were engaged in distance learning, weeks, months before the IB exams and the AP exams and all of the requirements that come for these designations, they persevered and they stayed focused to ensure that our kids, their kids, would be able to take advantage of all of the opportunities available to them. These recognitions certainly we're proud of as a district, but these are our kids. Mentored, inspired, with great educators, to ensure during that very uncertain time, they stayed the course and they saw through what they had committed to accomplish by the time they graduated. So if you would, let's give our teachers and our schools a round of applause for their accomplishment. Next, I would like to continue sharing with the board and the community because ultimately, the economic condition outlook for us as a public entity, as a, as the public school system funded by the state, want to assure the board and our community, we remain focused on preparing for some of the uncertainty of the, of the future. But I'd like to begin, I'd like to take a step back in where we've come from, kind of our journey in budgeting over the last several months. The board recalls that we, when we received the proposed budget from the legislature at the end of March, we were anticipating that what was ultimately approved by the governor late June, a $1 million deficit due to declining enrollment and a significant required FRS, or Florida Retirement System Contribution, on behalf of Brevard Public Schools employees. But in addition to that initial deficit, we were also facing significant additional expenses through the result of opening a new elementary school, state mandated security program cost increases, as well as in response to the expenses that we were facing with our self-insured healthcare plan. Ultimately, those deficits led to the very difficult and challenging work of identifying budget cuts and/or savings to address those needs, which led to the elimination of media assistant positions across the district, as well as 60 other positions from IAs to support staff to district administration, as well as service to our students through regional busing. Then we faced COVID in the spring closure. But I'm very pleased and proud of this organization and our commitment to sustaining our workforce that we concluded or closed out last year with no furloughs or layoffs for employees. While experiencing reduced revenues in our enterprise functions, some, some folks don't understand that we have two specific, what are called enterprise entities in Brevard Public Schools. They're self-funding services. One is food and nutrition services. Food and nutrition services runs completely on their own revenue. It is not subsidized or supplemented with district operating budget. So when we closed in March, they were faced with the great concern that they would have a significant loss of revenue, as expected. But the rallying force of our food and nutrition services to provide a high-quality response to the pickup, breakfast, and lunch program was able to subsidize their program during that closure last spring. But also, our Brevard Aftercare Program is an enterprise function. It is self-funded. And with the closure at the end of the year, it did require operating budget to cover those expenses, primarily the salaries of employees. As we entered the 2020-21 school year, the board is aware, the community is aware that our enrollment, we did experience under-projected enrollment to start the year of approximately 3,000 students in addition to 1,400 more students in our Brevard Virtual Program. I'm pleased to share that our leading and learning leaders and staff have been working, our schools have been working diligently to reach out to parents. And our, particularly our elementary enrollment, which was the greatest gap, has had, seen a growth of about 350 students over the last few weeks since six-day count. But through the six-day count process, when we met with schools, several schools did not meet their enrollment requirements, ultimately necessary to retain staff. And there are approximately 31 units that includes that variety of folks, from IAs to media assistants, clerks, guidance, admin. Those are positions that were lost due to enrollment, but we made the decision to continue to allow the schools to carry those positions as they're critical to support the needs of the school and the students that we serve, ultimately leading to, again, at this point, no layoffs or no furloughs, even with the reduced enrollment. Remind the board and our community that at this point, at this time, we have not received any assurance from the state for second semester funding from the state. I was asked, actually, Ms. McDougal asked earlier this afternoon, what is the status of e-learning for second semester? Are we able to continue e-learning or not? And my response was, it's consistent with this in that the emergency order from the Florida Department of Education is, is only through first semester. So the designation of e-learning as a full-time equivalent fund, full-time equivalent earning student is only applicable for first semester for e-learning, unless there is action taken by the Commissioner of Education to extend the emergency order. Not received any information of that at this time, but we're awaiting if that, that may become a possibility for a second semester. One of the other budget impacting factors that we are monitoring very closely right now is our transportation ridership. The good news is, is that our ridership is down significantly, so social distancing is, is very favorable for social distancing. However, it's very disadvantageous for funding because our transportation program is funded based on ridership. And our ridership currently is at about a 41% participation from this time last year. That's very concerning when trans, we only receive about 59% of our transportation costs funded by the state to begin with. I've shared with the board over the last couple board meetings the financial forecasts that have been provided from the state over the last six weeks, the Economic Demographic Research Report and the Long Range Financial Outlook Report. I won't go into detail of those reports again. Encourage our community to look at the presentations from the last two board meetings. But essentially, there's consistent forecasts projecting approximately a potential $20 million budget reduction based on state revenue reductions over the next two years. So we are already looking toward our budget for 2021-22. What we know at this point is that we do have another projected $10 million health insurance trust fund deficit. This is based on our consultants' projections. And unfortunately, this is even after this year's considerable contributions on behalf of the board to the, with a $4.7 million contribution in recurring revenue, a one-time infusion of $5 million, as well as the anticipated savings in premium revenue on behalf of the employees of $5.4 million. Also, the grant-style funded positions and program allocations will no longer be funded after this year. So we'll be needing to address that shortfall for the 21-22 budget, which is approximately $1 million, includes teacher allocations and our athletic equalization contribution to our schools. But there are several things that we don't know going into next year's budget. Of course, enrollment uncertainties, particularly when we're entering into the, the projection process, our enrollment projection process next month. We begin that formally as a district. We look at growth rates, we look at birth rates, we look at growth in our community. And a team across the district, cross-functional team, comes together and begins to project what our enrollment is. The particular challenge is, well, what will be the status of COVID next year, or even second semester? Will there be e-learning as an option? Will we see or potentially not see a migration of students who are on Brevard Virtual School or in homeschool come back to our brick and mortar schools? And then, consistent is our charter school enrollment and growth that we have to monitor. In addition, transportation ridership is, is in question. Will it return to the participation levels that we had pre-COVID? Brevard Aftercare, our participation in our aftercare program is significantly reduced right now. Will that participation resume next year? I want to note at this time, the board knows that the Brevard Aftercare Program actually supplements the operating budget of approximately $2.3 million. And we are not on pace or on, on schedule to realize that revenue for the budget for 21-22. Of course, the public education funding from the state is unknown and uncertain. And then another referendum that is on the ballot on November 3rd that will impact Brevard Public Schools is the minimum wage referendum. If it passes, it will impact hourly, hourly rate employees in that we have to increase, the, the minimum wage will be increased by a dollar from 8.59, I believe, to 9.59, if that, if my memory serves correct. That won't have a significant impact likely on us in year one, but the referendum increases the minimum way, or minimum wage, a dollar every year until it reaches $15. So that would be an ongoing expense that would continue to impact us as an organization. So what do we, what have we established as our priorities? I don't think it's a surprise that workforce sustainability is our absolute number one priority. We are dependent on the great individuals across our district to serve our students with the excellence that we have as our standard. So far, we have had no layoffs and no furloughs. And we can be proud of that in supporting our employees over the last many very uncertain months. Also, number, our second priority is to ensure that our health insurance trust fund remains solvent. Because the reality is, we know that our over 6,000 employees and the other approximately 5,000 employees or their dependents rely on our health insurance, our self-insured health plan. But throughout the start of COVID and reopening our schools and our, and forward, our focus has been on opening, reopening our schools safely and maintaining safety, protecting our current teachers and staff, and their ability to focus on delivering excellent education for every student, while also continuing to monitor expenditures for ongoing savings and protect fund balance as a buffer to potential mid-year revenue loss or budget loss, budget deficits next year. I'll conclude with this slide. The, the board has seen it before. It's been in the prior presentations. We remain focused on prudent steps, not just priorities, but tangible steps that we are taking to be prepared for our financial responsibilities and obligations as we continue to move through these next several months into the next budget year. With that, I offer any questions, opportunity for any questions to the board.
Any board members have any questions or comments for Dr. Mullins? I'll just say, Dr. Mullins, that maybe we should have done the budget discussion first and then the celebration after, but we, we appreciate you providing the information and the update. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. We are now at public comments. All public comments are in person this evening. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you will be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times and your statement should be directed to the board chairman. The chairman may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chairman may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or are watching from home. Let's begin with our first three speakers. Before speaking, please state your name, the organization you represent, if any, and identify the topic you will be discussing. We will go in this order, Alan, Doug, and Anthony. Alan, if you'd like to approach the microphone?
Can we take these off when we talk?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. All right, thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity. I'm here tonight for, excuse me, Brevard Sports Network. And I'm here to try to gain some clarification and possibly answer some questions as it pertains to the new media policy. Let me take you back to August the 16th in the conversation that I had, or a text conversation that I had with Mr. Susan, that simply said at that time that he'd be introducing a new media policy that would be all-inclusive, that would take care of, I guess, the little guy like Brevard Sports Network and maybe even perhaps 321 Sportscast. Couple of weeks later, a media policy is introduced from 2009, I believe that was rolled out from when Spectrum Sports came to town. That media policy was pulled back two days before the start of the high school football season. Another media policy comes out that states we have to have background checks and then we have to have a million dollars worth of limited liability insurance. Totally understand all that. I get it. We need to protect our children and we need to make sure that we're insured. For my organization personally, as of September the 29th, I could check both of those boxes, thanks to Corporal Lance over here. I could check both of those boxes. But here I am and I sit before the board today, and I still do not have approval to stream. I was also told that, that streaming was going to be all-inclusive and that as many people, and I understand the COVID situation, that, that there would not, there wouldn't be one entity allowed in another conversation I had had. Then I'm told in a meeting that the board is seeking exclusivity, that the board is actually looking for just one outlet to do this and that Space Coast Daily has already submitted a bid for $10,000 and $20,000 worth of in-kind contributions. You know, we would like to have a shot at that. You know, whether it's Pixelot or NFHS or Brevard Sports Network or 321 Sportscast. I've spent my last six years covering these kids more than anybody else in this community has done it. I do it with passion, I do it with purpose. You know, I understand the, you know, how much high school football means to the community. But I ask you this, what other outlet in this community or what other person in this community has streamed bowling, cross-country, track, volleyball, tennis, swimming? I've done that. My outlet's done that. So has 321 Sportscast. All we're asking for is a seat at the table. We want an opportunity to be heard. We want an opportunity to make a bid if that's indeed where this is going. And I will also tell you, this is a guy that has experience covering sports media. There is no one outlet that can cover all of these sports or take care of all of these kids. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Alan. All right. Doug, you're up next.
Hi. My name is Doug Helms. I'm representing myself as a parent of two juniors at West Shore Senior High School. The topic is COVID-19 response protocols. I applaud the steps that BPS has taken in response to COVID-19. However, the current COVID-19 response protocols need to be improved to avoid unnecessarily disrupting the learning environment. On Wednesday, September 23rd, my daughter stayed home from school with a runny nose. She had no other symptoms. By Thursday, she was much better. To be on the safe side, on Thursday... To be on the safe side, on Thursday evening, at 5:30 PM, she took a Quidel Corporation Sofia Rapid FIA antigen test at Atlantis Urgent Care. She tested positive. On Friday morning, I notified the administration at Westshore. As a result, 22 students were put into quarantine. That same morning, my entire family was tested using the more reliable PCR testing at Eastern Florida State College. The next day, we received the results. All four of us were negative. We retested again on Saturday, and again, all tests were negative. It was clear that the rapid antigen test that my daughter took on Thursday evening was a false positive. I did some research on the rapid antigen test and learned the following. In July, at a health clinic in Manchester, Vermont, it revealed 65 possible cases of COVID-19. The test utilized was the same antigen test manufactured by Quidel Corporation. The Vermont Department of Health retested using the more reliable PCR test. Only four of the 65 actually tested positive. In August, Ohio Governor Mike DeWine received a positive antigen test result and then two negative PCR test results. Again, the rapid antigen test that provided the false positive was manufactured by Quidel. Governor DeWine says the rapid antigen method should be looked at as a screening test, not the final word. This also occurs locally. I'm aware of three cases where rapid antigen tests delivered a false positive and students were sent home. The CDC states on the website, "The gold standard for detection of COVID remains PCR, and it is necessary to confirm a rapid antigen test with a with a PCR test." The recommended time interval between collection samples should be no less than two days. My daughter retested less than 16 hours later with a negative. The Associated Public Health Laboratory states the false positive results are possible with antigen test. If a false positive is suspected, the individual should be retested with a PCR. Obviously, the two negative results from the more accurate PCR test should have outweighed the false positive with the antigen test. Let's look at the collateral damage. 22 students were quarantined unnecessarily, and their education was disrupted. One of those students was a senior and was told she cannot take this SAT test this past Saturday. My son says, "Dad, if you don't want to get diagnosed with COVID, then don't get tested." If we're not able to apply common sense to the BPS COVID-19 protocol, we run the risk that all parents would choose not to have their children tested at all. Want to wrap up now? I request the BPS revise its COVID-19 protocols as follows. One, follow the CDC recommendation and encourage the use of the gold standard PCR test. BPS should inform all parents that their students should take a PCR test rather than a rapid antigen test.
Ms. Helms, unfortunately, your three minutes has passed, but if you could get with Ms. Moore in the back, she will be happy to take that, and she can share it with with the rest of us as well.
I've suggested this Ms. Moore. Unfortunately, nothing happened.
Okay.
Okay? And the last thing I just want to say is please allow an appeal process.
Allow what?
Appeal process. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening. Anthony Clucci.
Appreciate that. Nobody else has touched it either. My name is Anthony Clucci. I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Without a doubt, I'm thrilled that many teachers in Brevard will be seeing raises of $7,324. I'm pleased that these new teachers will not have to struggle like so many of us have for salary increases. I'm hopeful that this starting salary will draw many young and talented individuals into education. I'm glad that we've made considerable progress at the bargaining tables, such as agreeing to one pay scale for both classroom and non-classroom teachers. I'm excited that our district has taken a step in the right direction and will be the first in the state to offer some form of parental leave. I understand that BPS is considerably increasing contributions into our Health Insurance Trust Fund. However, what needs to be addressed is a salary offer for our veteran teachers. While I fully realize the parameters of the governor's teacher salary allocation and the bleak financial picture are to blame for inequity in raises this year, your offer of $710 for veteran teachers must be improved. Veteran teachers have endured pay freezes, lost steps, and have loyally stuck with BPS. Although there is a widespread misconception that experience doesn't matter in education, research says otherwise. Based on 30 studies published that met rigorous criteria in analyzing the effect of teaching experience on student outcomes in the U.S., the Learning Policy Institute found teaching experience is positively associated with student achievement gains throughout a teacher's career. A teacher, as teachers gain experience, their students are more likely to do better on measures of success beyond test scores, such as school attendance. More experienced teachers confer benefits to their colleagues, their students, and to the school as a whole. While I do applaud the district to agreeing to the longevity supplement of $1,200 last year, that supplement did not entirely correct the issue. For instance, including the $710 raise on the table and the longevity supplement, as a teacher my 21st year, I'm still making $1,351 less than I would have made on the 2007/08 pay scale. Including the $710 raise on the table and longevity supplement, as a 21st-year teacher, I'm still making $3,444 less than I would have made on the 14/15 pay scale. We recognize there may be funding concerns looming. We recognize there's been a great deal of progress at the table, but what we're stuck on is pay for our veteran teachers. We're asking that you can, you do as much as you can to help our veteran teachers and increase your offer to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clucci. Ms. Skipper? And then our last speaker will be David.
Is that you? Is that him?
Good evening, Vanessa Skipper, Vice President, BFT. I asked a few questions of our teachers today about their technology needs. I know that we're in, starting to be in evaluation season, so administrators will be giving evaluations. And I'd like to ask all of our administrators, district-wide, to really think about the technology limitations that each teacher might have, and also the idea that some of our teachers have improved their technology in their classroom by spending money out of their own pocket and by spending money that actually doesn't qualify under state statute for the CSAP funds. I also want them to take a step back and realize that their teachers are experiencing something that they never experienced in the classroom. One of the things I draw from when I try to help a teacher in the role I'm in now is my experience in the classroom. And that's kind of hard right now because I've never been in our teachers' shoes like they are, they are right now. So I asked three questions. I'm not going to be able to get through everything, but I'd be happy to share the data that I received. So one of the questions I asked was, "What technology have you purchased with your own money that you think would be helpful if the district was able to purchase it?" And we have wireless headsets. It'll make it easier to hear, to take one-on-one assessments in breakout rooms without my in-person students hearing the answers or getting distracted. Purchased a laptop stand that elevates my laptop higher, iPad stand, monthly subscriptions like flac- flacabulary, extra monitors teachers have purchased to display Zoom windows, screen being shared, and the other program you may need, ClassDojo, et cetera. They also said, I asked, "What do you think every classroom should have to bring it up to date with the year 2020?" And a lot of teachers answered one-on-one, one-to-one technology. Interactive whiteboard, new laptops that actually work, Wi-Fi wireless headsets, smart boards or similar wireless remote clicker style. They talked about technology infrastructure to be able to manage the wireless platform, the the technology, the textbooks, the tools that they do have, but feel that they're bogged down with with Internet, with everybody obviously online. Somebody actually mentioned that the majority of their school has chalkboards still. And I did not ask for schools, so I'm curious to find out which one that one is. Computer equipment, better laptops. Sorry, I'm trying to use technology right here, and it's not working. But, you know, these are all things that I think we need to ask the teachers for. So once we go to actually buy technology, if we have money in the future to do that, we need to actually ask the teachers that are in the classroom what they need to be able to function in this world.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper. David?
David Sirdar, Fruitland Park, Florida, that's gone to Tallahassee and has had AIDS, and the governor talked to me. You know, my father was a principal at the same elementary school he was as a child. He died at 91. I've worked in funeral homes. My wife owns flower shops. She taught flower at the College of Lake County that my dad's superintendent started. College of Lake County used to be called the College of Last Chance in Lake County, Illinois. It's a mega campus now. I came fourth in the school, fourth year of the school. We came second in the country on the golf team. A wise teacher makes learning a joy. And my father would still get letters from doctors and lawyers that got their jobs. He didn't even go to my ballgames. I played for the tallest team ever come out of Illinois. Dr. Mullins, it's nice to meet you. My dad's superintendent was A.J. Katzenmeyer. They had the A.J. Katzenmeyer Cup Golf Tournament. I won it. We have, you know, nowadays, we have to thank the officers that are taking protection for our, there's a lot of things that we got to do different with COVID, with officers. Sheriff Ivey called me directly today in Mr. Smith's office. I was just at the commissioner's meeting next door. My father, that's him right there. My mother's still alive. She's 92. And that lion represents my Uncle Paul, the Illinois racecar chairman, Safari Hunter. You know, I'm worried about our elections. A house divided against itself cannot stand. I learned myself, my teachers ended up being mayors of Waukegan, Illinois, Jack Penny hometown. Hank Peripodia was my, one of my best teachers. Hank, well, I, the teacher that taught me how to drive a car, he ended up being a mayor too, and he had a mink rat. You know, I may be appointed, take time for the water management. I'm trying to teach you a lot of information. I'm worried about our kids' future. I got a bottle bill in front of the governor, right here in Brevard County. How do you vote for the president? You know, supervisor of elections, electing the president. You know, our country's in trouble. I am a Trump supporter. Republicans and Democrats have ruined our country. In Kenosha, Wisconsin, my friend's businesses are burning, are dead. And it's ridiculous. I've been, you know, I, a bird man. My dad had purple martins. I love nature. I'm part of Alcoxonomist. There's an Alateen program. There's too much drinking and drugging. Some kids have to go to the Salvation Army to get their utilities paid by their parents. Some parents are ridiculous. Maybe not in your community, but around the state. I have a map there. I've been all over the state. I used to work at Leesburg High School. Mark Palmer, head of security, I got his card. He's still a federal marshal for the Supreme Court of Florida. He's got such a personality. I've gone to school board meetings, Lake County, South River County, and I'm a concerned citizen, worried about our kids' future. I've been told by a NASA scientist, our rocks already gone. Friends of mine were airline pilots. They don't, their sons don't make the money they used to. You know, I, my sister was a teacher, elementary. She's retired. Kindergarten teacher. Had the best classroom that could have.
Thank you so much for joining us this evening. We appreciate you being here. Thank you. Okay, the board wishes to thank our speakers from this evening. Your willingness to speak to the board is much appreciated, and your time to join us. Did any board members need to address any? Ms. Campbell?
Yes, really quick. Mr. Clucci, and I can give you the name of the school before you leave. But I, I know that you know this, and I know this, and most people know too much, but I want to just clarify, there are still a few teachers in the district, including one representative, a building representative, who is thinking that the minimum is only going to be for the brand-new teachers. So I just want to clarify, and I know you have probably said it many, many times, but there are still a few people who are not realizing that when we set that new minimum, that that is the new minimum for everyone. And the reason why I specifically bring it up, and I was pulling up my spreadsheet that I, you know, I worked real hard on last year, sent to you. We have teachers who have, depending on if they got ineffective or highly effective, who have been with the district for more than 10 years, who could still be under that minimum. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands, even though we've said it before, that once that new minimum is set, that is everybody raising up to the minimum and not just brand-new to our district. So I'll, I'll tell you what, which school it was, but just might know that that's still floating around out there. Thank you.
Ms. Duszkiewicz?
I'm curious about what Alan was. I know that we brought this up for discussion, or, you know, Mr. Susan has brought this up. But I was not aware that we moved forward with sole sourcing to Space Coast Daily, or is there some?
Ms. Moore is approaching the, no, she's not approaching.
Well, I was just, I, I texted her while Mr. Alan was speaking. We are not currently seeking a sole source for broadcasting, so I believe this gentleman has incorrect information and would direct him to speak with Ms. Moore.
Okay, so I would, I personally would like just a little bit of correct information. Do you know it, or should we ask Ms. Moore? Just to kind of?
Ms. Moore would have the best, you know, information. We are working through the policy now, and we have made individuals who have met the minimum requirements of background check and the insurance requirements, they have been provided access to athletic events. Ms. Moore?
Yeah, so what we're working on right now isn't a policy, it's the procedures. So we're not, we're not resetting policy. And they are procedures that have been in place for a long time. When we went back to review them, we realized two things. Number one, we don't believe they've been followed to the letter or even closely. And number two, they really shouldn't be applied in times when we are setting a, a limit to the people who can watch our games. So we took a look at it and said, okay, here are the two minimum standards. We want background screening, we want insurance. And we asked everybody who wanted to come in and, and do live streaming to meet those two standards. I'm not sure why Alan hasn't been able to go in and start streaming yet, if he's met those two standards. But we'll meet afterward and we'll talk. I haven't been aware of anybody that's been denied access who have met those two standards. We haven't denied anybody access who represent our, our local newspapers. So right now, we, we've basically said, here's our minimum standards, and we want you to come in. We want to be able to televise and livestream and, you know, provide our, our community with access to our games, especially since we're limiting our gates.
Okay, that's the, what I got out of our last conversation, a workshop or wherever we discussed it. discussed it. So I was just surprised to hear that Mr. Allen was having trouble. So hopefully with the two of you connect, that can get worked out.
Matter of fact, I texted our assistant director Ramjet, Andrew Ramjet, Dr. Andrew Ramjet, and I said, I need you to watch the school board, I need you to listen to what Alan said and figure out what's going on there. So I know he's already working on it, but I'll, I'll meet you in the back.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
And Ms. Moore, we are moving forward with a policy eventually, it's just that the procedure is a quicker way to get our pieces in place, right?
I take direction from, from you guys on policies that you want reviewed, so right now, we're working on procedure, and if that's what we said, I'll just have to go back and take a look at that.
Yeah, yeah, we just, we were looking forward to a policy and a procedure, procedure in the short run, because we were up against the back. I think that the policy's in the long run, and we had said that a background check and insurance, which is standard, along with open access for people, and then I think there was some talk about possibly charging per game, and we were going back and forth, but that's for discussion when the policy comes forward. So you've done everything that we asked you to do so far.
Yep.
I just did want to just kind of mention to you that I think the board direction was to bring back a policy so we could workshop it and move forward in the future to come. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any other comments on public comment? Comments, questions, requests for follow-up?
Ms. Belfort and members of the board, I would like to just clarify and offer to the parents of a West Shore student, we do not have a BPS COVID protocol. It is a Department of Health-guided Quarantine Protocol. We do take, we do confer with, directly with the Department of Health, and we work very closely to determine what the quarantine requirements are. They do have an appeal process that, that can be taken advantage of. It's my understanding that parents have done that, but that's something that is overseen by the Department of Health. We, we, we work closely to follow their direction. I also wanted to give, hopefully I'm not going to overpromise and underdeliver, but I want to, I want to acknowledge and validate Ms. Skipper's concerns about our teachers and technology. I've visited a handful of schools over the last two or three weeks and asked a lot of the same questions. What are you experiencing? If you had something, what would you, you know, to help with technology, what would you need? Some of the same things Ms. Skipper identified. In that time period, I was in conversation with Frank Abate, county manager across the street. He said that they continue to have CARE, excuse me, CARES Act funds available, that we could make another submission of ask. Mr. Novelli has been working with schools across the district. We've identified some additional technology support that we are pursuing in hopes that it'll be funded by the county. So I just wanted to make you aware, we are already looking into that to try and get some additional supports for our teachers, hopefully in the coming weeks. I, I would share that, I believe, Mr. Cheatham, do we still have, I'll say, hundreds of computers on order waiting? We're kind of stuck in the supply chain as well? Thousands of laptop computers? You know, that's a gridlock that we're experiencing across, still, we got in early, we got in quickly, but we're, we're still waiting for them to, to receive. I think we got a few hundred of them out in the last couple of weeks, didn't we? So we're, we're continuing to work through it, understand the, the challenge, and we'll continue to do everything we can for the teachers as they manage those dual platforms, many of them. I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Mullins. We appreciate it. All right, this is going to move us into the consent agenda. Dr. Mullins?
There are seven agenda items under this category.
Does any board member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? Saying not all entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Duszkiewicz, seconded by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes 5-0. We are now moving on to the action agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Belfort and members of the board, item G18 is on department-school-initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, who's the second?
I did.
Ms. McDougal, second. Any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
Item G19 is on procurement solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Duszkiewicz, without a 5-0?
Yes.
The motion passes 5-0. We are now at the information items. These items may be brought back later, however, there will be no action taken on these items this evening. There are three items under this category this evening. Does any board member wish to discuss any of the information items?
Just like to say thank you to the legislative, one minute for that.
Mr. Brune is going to address that with us on staff report at the end.
Little party.
I think it's kind of exciting to recognize our two teachers who were asked to serve on the, Dr. Buddy, I'm not going to get it right, the state regional literacy directors through CARES Act funding, and so they're going to be helping statewide, in our, in our region, correct? But they were chosen, and that is Whitney Augustine and Tamara Thatcher. So thank you, ladies, for being willing to serve not just our county, but our state, our, our region in our literacy efforts to catch everybody up and move them forward.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell, for that recognition. Any other discussion around information items? All right, at this time, our chief strategic communications officer, Russ Brune, will review with us a copy of the legislative, legislative priorities draft.
Good evening, school board superintendent. This is a draft review of the 2021 legislative agenda for the Brevard School District to Tallahassee. There's a total of five items for a review. The first one is pre-K teachers to be included as classroom teachers, creating consistency between the pre-K and K-12 teachers. The goal is to look at a study to see the impact on pre-K teachers that would help guide the state and the district in creating consistency. We request a study during the 2021 legislative session. It could be requested by the Senate President or the House Speaker and request the Florida School Boards Association's support with this agenda item. The second item is redefine classroom teachers to include all instructional personnel. The goal is, as districts have found, the state's definition of a classroom teacher does not include vital educators like media specialists, counselors, and other instructional, instructional personnel. The action would be to discuss this request with our local delegation for input and support, and also request support from the Florida School Boards Association. Item number three, school security, request funding for the school guardian training program. The mandate to have armed and trained personnel in our school remains, but after this year, the funding for training and equipment will not be there. It's, it's vital to secure a funding source from the state. Action item for that, again, discuss with the local delegation and the state Florida School Boards Association. Also, get a letter of support from the Brevard County Sheriff's Office. Number four, evacuation drills, quality over quantity. The goal is to reduce the number of evacuation drills during a school year while increasing the effectiveness of each drill. This would make the drills more effective for students and staff and would reduce disruptions for the school day. The action for that would be, again, get with the local delegation to get their input and support, and also request help from the Florida School Boards Association. And number five, the final one, request resources for district social workers and mental health experts. The goal, funding to support social workers and mental health experts inside schools. Funds could be new or redirected from our organization to assist these district leaders. Those are the five items. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, sir. Board members have questions or comments?
I know we discussed these, and these were kind of all settled upon, but number five concerns me the way it is presented for a couple of reasons. One, we've met with legislators enough to know that an open-ended give me more money, like, makes them angry. We need to, I think we need to fine-tune this to a very specific ask. We, we have the need, for sure, but just an open-ended give me, give me, they get frustrated, and there's no, it's not quantified, they don't even know what to look for, and they just ignore it. So if, if we're serious about number five, which I think we are, I like that we, well, I also am a little concerned redirect from the organization. What does, what does that mean? Does that mean we're asking them to take money out of one of our pots that's already short, I'm sure, and put it in this pot? We have to clarify this before this goes before our legislators.
Just, I had a chance, opportunity to look at the preliminary budget based on legislative budget requests. It appears as though the mental health allocation that the state has committed to over the last several years, well, it's very early in the process and cycle, but it is funded at the rate that it's been funded in the past without an increase for 2021, 22. We'll take a closer look at that again, and perhaps we look at what the increase has been over the last couple of years and target a increase in the mental health allocation, which gives us the opportunity to direct those dollars to, in our mental health plan that we submit to the state, to apply it to that area, so we could get much more specific in that area.
Do you mean like a percent, like a X percent? Okay. Yeah, anything like that, anything with a little bit more specificity, you know, so that they can understand what we're asking for and how we're going to use it, just to say, give us more money for mental health. I don't know, fund us 10% more for 24, whatever the numbers are, we need 24 counselors because we only have one. Most of my beachside, all of my beachside schools do not have a social worker, and so, you know, one per four schools would be great, something, you know, anything better than what we have, just so that there's some, they can see where the gap and where the problems are.
I think, Mr. Brune, just since we're in discussion, if you don't mind, I think it could be helpful that we, we provide a look at what the mental health allocation does provide for our schools now. There may be a misconception that that provides a social worker for every school to, to the legislators, because they see millions of dollars being allocated. So we'll get much more granular and specific to Brevard Public Schools and what the current allocation provides, and then what a recommendation is to grow it, knowing that we can't fix it in one year. That wouldn't be realistic.
Perfect, thank you.
And I, I think too, where the language came on directing it from other areas, was one of the things that we had talked about in that meeting was looking and seeing if there are other, outside of the education budget from the state.
Right, but that's not what this says. This sounds like, take it from our, whatever, security officers and move it over to mental health, or, you know, wherever they want to pull it from. We just have to be more clear.
But I, I think there, there's still an opportunity to perhaps have that conversation with our legislators about dollars that may be outside the education budget that could be directed to that additional support.
Maybe even asking that some of those organizations be directed to, to jump in to what we're doing, and then be some of those, be resources for us in addition to, or instead of, or in addition to the roles that they're already playing. I say that knowing that the mental health professionals across our state in every field are stretched very thin right now.
Yes, absolutely.
I, a few weeks ago, we had, when Native Francis presented to us the data for, and we started talking about accountability, we had mentioned, I, and I don't know if this is legislative or Department of Education, but about asking that this year, when we have our, our standardized testing and all of that, that this year's become a new, a bit new baseline, and we kind of have a hold harmless year. Dr. Mullins, you know, would that be more of a DOE thing?
I believe it would be a state board of education. Would it have to be done legislatively? Dr., okay.
Okay.
So we did talk about that, we'll, we'll include it. It certainly, I think we talked about it at cabinet as well, that we would look for an allowance.
It affects so many things. It affects, you know, teacher recognition, it affects school recognition, you know, all kinds of funding things. I mean, I think our, our students are going to do an amazing job, but across the state, I mean, we've all, it's been a struggle, and I think it would be a great year, especially since we do not have accountability for last year, to say this year is going to be our new baseline, and we have a hold harmless, so.
So just to clarify, if I understand correctly, make sure we're all on the same page, we would, we would advocate for student achievement, but we would ask that any sanctions related to student achievement be waived for 2021.
Right, so that we have this year to compare it to.
Correct.
Right, right, because, I mean, if we have a school, we, we have schools all across the state that all of a sudden become D or F schools, and it's because of, you know, current circumstances, that is extremely unfair.
As Ms., as Ms. Francis presented, we have concerns over what the school grading realities are going to be, because they're using the, if you remember, the prior, prior year for learning gains and so on. We're, we've got some concerns related to industry certification and, and, you know, students going two years, and we're losing a whole grade level of learning gains, because there'll be no learning gains for fourth grade this year. So I think it's a very appropriate priority for us legislatively.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm guessing you'll work through that with our leading and learning folks who have their head super wrapped around all of the potential impacts of that ask.
Absolutely.
I don't want them, I don't want it to hurt us in the long run, because we're, like, it would be great if they would still give us the money that they would normally give us for doing good things, having good numbers, but not hold us accountable, you know, if in the instances it goes the other way.
Sure.
I just hate for them to say, well, okay, then we just won't give any additional dollars for AP, IB, or ACE this year, or, you know, craziness like that. We have to be careful what we ask for.
We'll definitely follow up.
Do you have anything to say?
It's just about social workers. Oh, I'm so sorry. With the social work, I know that I stepped out for a few minutes with the social work, but I, I think if we can look at, and I'm sure Ms. Moore's department has already had some of this information, about the value and the data that shows the value that a social worker brings for education. As we all know, excuse me, that a student will not be able to learn if there is social emotional issues that he brings to school or she brings to school. We all know that. So how do we, I think we need to educate our legislatures so that they know that, because I'm not sure everybody's familiar with that, so.
Great point, Ms. McDougal, thank you.
I, I will make this suggestion to that, that item. I know that the first lady has, has, this is, mental health is one of her, her passions and projects, and she's had several roundtables recently regarding this, so if, if there's a way for us to kind of match the language that she's using, that might be helpful.
Just Capitol City lobby the first lady.
They will soon, yes.
Can we get them to lobby her instead of the legislators? She probably has a little more pull.
Right. Mr. Susan, anything from you?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you so much to the staff and everybody else involved in making the pre-K issue one of our goals. It's been a long haul, and as we've looked at all the different issues, this is the right path. Some of the pre-K teachers that are out there right now are going to say, well, wait a minute, what is OPAGA? What is it that we're doing? What is the study that you're putting together? There are so many issues with pre-K that if you try to take one singularly or another one, you end up on a quest that will take 30 years. And what this study does is it wraps the entire system around and makes a study based on how to improve and how to bring forward the pre-K teachers. And it doesn't mean that it's automatically happening. We are going to request this, so they're still going to need to make a lobbying effort to move forward, but the OPAGA study is the step in the right direction, and I think that I, I am so happy and, and proud that you guys came forward. There is one addition that I'd like to put down there, which is letter D, superintendents' association recommendations, see if we can't go after them too, because I think everybody, when you talk to them across the board, early learning development is there, and pre-K is our, our identifier for that. And I, I wanted to say thank you. I think that this is amazing, and I think that we're going to move forward along with all the other pieces in here, the classroom teachers that are not being identified, the, you know, have our funding for our security specialists on and off. We did a good job. This one, I promise you, is a whole lot better than some of the other ones that people are putting out there, because we put our time into it, and we do a great job, so I wanted to say thank you. That's it. Oh, wait, I called the, I have the pre-K teachers online, and they were, they wanted me to let you guys know that they appreciated it, so they're cheering here. Just wanted to let you know that there's a bunch of them, they're all, they're all in support right now, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Need direction, as we have to submit our platform request to FSBA by next week, do you all suggest that we put forward all, it's six now, right? We added one?
Are we limited?
I don't think we're limited. I think we could probably submit all six and then see what sticks and what doesn't stick. I mean, it doesn't impact our, our local legislative platform, it just impacts, you know, what they will, will be rallying around as a state organization. So I would suggest that we go ahead and submit all of them and see what gets through and what maybe looks, you know, the same as other districts that are bringing forward recommendations, if you guys are good with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
So I will follow up with Mr. Brune, and we will, we've got some forms we have to fill out for submission and make sure that we get the, the language cleaned up and, and all of that fun stuff, and then we'll get that submitted next week. Dr. Mullins, Mr. Brune, did you need any additional direction from the board?
Good.
We're good, thank you for your feedback.
Thank you so much.
I would just add, I want to, you know, my, my appreciation of Mr. Brune as well. He, the OPAGA thing is a little different than what we've, you know, an approach we've taken in the past with our legislative priorities. That wasn't, we didn't make that up, we reached it, the board suggested contacting Capitol City, our lobbyists. Mr. Brune met with Scott Ra, Scott or not, Scott Ross last week, and they, we talked through what we're trying to accomplish and the best route to get there, and Mr. Ross recommended the OPAGA route. So really gave us some good direction on that, so thank you, Mr. Brune, for doing that. I think, just to, you know, echo Mr. Susan's sentiments, I think we're heading in a good direction for our pre-K folks.
And if I can just say, you know, Mr. Brune, how long have you been with us now?
A month, maybe.
Has it been a month?
It's been fun.
Talk about hit the ground running and, and really stepping up to the plate. We appreciate you rushing this through to meet that deadline and doing all the legwork that you had to do to be prepared for tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Duszkiewicz?
Usually, in years prior, we have voted on our legislative agenda. Are we planning on voting on this? Or what, is there a reason it's not on the agenda to be voted on tonight?
Just, this is the first opportunity that the, the board has had to see what was put together.
Okay.
So I think some, some conversation and fine-tuning, and then we can always bring it back for a vote.
Of course, it's a late session, so we probably won't even be meeting with them until February, January.
We should start.
Committee weeks start early December this year. Committee weeks start early December this year.
Okay. We need, we needed it for our FSBA, because that's due next week.
Right.
Well, if committee weeks are December, then we should have the luncheon, if we're still going to have a luncheon soon, like that should be.
So want to bring it back?
So, yeah, I don't, most of them probably are not going to be available until after the election, because
For sure.
That, you know, they're still focused there.
Well, you want to make sure it's the same ones. You don't want to meet with them before the election and then
Yes.
Them not being the ones you need to lobby.
So that gives us a, a small window between, you know, November 3rd and December, when they're going to start committee weeks, but we've, we've talked a little bit about, you know, we might have to get creative with those legis, with the legislative luncheon this year, just because of all the restrictions. So, but it's already on his radar, so.
Okay.
We, I have, I was invited to meet with Senator Wright, I don't remember when it is. Are you joining me on that one?
I think it's next week.
Next week? So we'll have an opportunity to give him, if you will, a sneak preview of what those items are, and, and just get some of these things on the radar as well, so.
Do we want to have, I mean, I know it's not an agenda item for the night, do we want to go ahead and just move forward? I mean, this is a tighter line than we thought. It sounds like we all agree, and it's fine, and just, I know in the past, we've gotten in this, one board member doesn't agree, we pull it off, but it seems like we're all on the same page on everything, so.
I like to wait at least till we get that, the language refined and get that last one on there.
Okay.
Because that probably needs to go through leading and learning to make sure we
So we can do that by the next board meeting?
Would you bring it back to the?
Are you going to hand Senator Wright something then, when you go?
No, we'll just make him aware verbally what some of our
What's coming?
What's coming.
Okay.
So we will then bring the legislative platform back at the October 27th.
We'll have it, we'll have it ready for the board at the next board meeting.
Super. Thank you. Anything else from the board members before? Okay, does any board member have anything else they would like to report at this time?
Nope.
Oh, I can't believe it.
No way.
Seeing no further, oh, Dr. Mullins, did you have anything else you wanted to report?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Quick, hit the hammer.
There being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned. Have a great night.